Town, our community, as it should be with members of the council and staff and those interested citizens who are here as we discuss these issues. Father, we lift up special blessings to those who have lost loved ones recently, also those who are recovering from medical condition or undergoing treatment for long-term or terminal illnesses. As you wrap your arms around them and their families and help comfort them at this time. Special blessings for the men and the women in the military, representing our country and serving in military bases all over this world. As it should be with them and with their families, as they are always having to prepare, protect the rights of our country and the countries in which they serve. Father, it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
The next on the agenda is petition and copy. Time only adjourned if anyone to address the council on anything other than the next agenda. If you come to the podium, say your name and address. Let me your comments to three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Hello, as many of you may know, my name is Chris McGuinness of 4408 Jessup Drive. You have discriminated against me based on my sexual orientation. I have already apprised you that I'm an openly proud gay man. As you know, I most recently appeared before you on April 14th, 2019. As of June 22nd of this year, it will be one year since you lodged a complaint against me. I have suffered emotionally, physically, spiritually, and financially. You have used the power and force of your government unfairly against me. I request that you make me whole and reimburse me for all of my expenditures and damages to my character, integrity, and business. Your attorney will be fully apprised if he has not already been so. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to add, if I could, a closed session matter relating to personnel. Other than that, I would move adoption of the agenda.
I need to, excuse me. We need to add a couple more items also. I'll need to add one under new old business to appoint a acting finance director.
Excuse me, is John gonna have one on the real estate?
Yeah, we're gonna personnel, it's not on there yet.
John got real estate.
Yeah, we got, we need to add also two other closed sessions for property and litigation, and we'll be covering another item under personnel that's different than council member Marshburn's item, so.
Right, the first one you said was going new and old business to be the naming of a acting finance director.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, with those amendments, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented. What you made to adopt agenda, Phil?
Second.
Second. What's the question? Hold the paper, vote by saying aye. Any presentations? Consent agenda.
Move adoption of the consent agenda as well.
Second.
What you made to take to adopt consent agenda? Hold the paper, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the post. No public hearings. New and old business. Who's taking that, Roger?
I guess Mr. Franks said we coming up to discuss the budget.
Welcome to the last meeting of the FY19, FY20 budget process. Tonight, we will be adopting the budget. Just a quick review of the budget schedule. The process started all the way back in April. On April 30th, council received the copy of the recommended budget. Then in May, we had a recommended budget public hearing on the 6th. On the 7th, a special budget all-day-long work session. On the 21st, an additional special budget work session. Then that process continued in June. On the 3rd, we had the recommended budget public hearing. Tonight, the 18th, is the proposed council adoption. And then in mid-August, we will actually publish the adopted budget. So over the course of time since April, staff has been taking up council's input and made a variety of different changes to the recommended budget, which I've summarized on this page. So starting on the revenue side, there's a net decrease of $81,228 from the recommended to what we're proposing in this budget. That's an increase to add velourium collection rate of a little over $20,000, an increase in interest income estimate of $40,000, eliminating a reduction in communications department of $5,000, reducing the use of appropriated fund balance by almost $46,000, and then reducing the ad velourium tax rate. So reducing the tax rate from the recommended number of three pennies down to two and three quarters, and that's $91,000. On the expenditure side, there's a corresponding decrease, a net change of $81,228. With that, we'd be funding the paying class study, that's in the fire department, the police department, and the parks and recreation department, funding the assistant fire chief, data analyst, training manager in the fire department for a half-year, eliminating one of the two police grant positions. We've received notice that we will only be receiving one of those two positions that were budgeted for, so we've removed the funding for the other position. We've also recommended utilizing unclaimed economic incentive funding to cover the GEDC year one cost. We've already appropriated FY18 and FY19 revenue to purchase budgeted items, so using money from this year to buy money for items that were budgeted for next year, and then deferring four police vehicles. So those are the changes that have been currently recommended to get us from the recommended budget to the adopted. So if that, I'll take any questions on the recommended changes or any other questions on the budget.
I have any comments on the budget?
I would just comment to Mr. Franks, thank you very much for your diligent efforts on this. It's been a process where we've looked at several different options, and you've taken the information that the council gave to you and have gone back and made those adjustments. And it would appear to me that what you're presenting to us this evening is consistent with most of those, while not all council members may agree on the final figures. I believe it's a good budget and reflects the needs the town has, doesn't reflect all of the wants and perhaps some of the needs, but I don't have any specific questions at this point in time. Thank you.
Anyone else, council members?
I think most of us spoke our piece the last time.
Are you ready to talk the budget? Yes, sir, we give him a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that this council adopt the budget as presented to aspire budget director, as he has reviewed it with us. Total adopted budget, $37,444,625.
I'll second that motion.
What you made to take a further discussion?
Yes, sir, there's one thing, is that this budget does call for a tax rate increase of 2.75 cents, as different, being different than a percentage, but 2.75 cents. And while we are likely to adopt this budget tonight, there'll be ongoing work during this coming year addressing other future budget issues that staff has outlined, just so outlined to us from previous conversations, that we'll be facing over the next five years. So tonight is almost a beginning, it's not an end. So it's painful to increase the taxes, but we have some funding challenges that we've had to address. We enumerated plenty of those at the last meeting, but this is a beginning, not an end.
Mayor, I would also like to note, as has been mentioned during our discussions, that notwithstanding the tax increase that this budget proposes, that when compared with other household costs in Wake County and other municipalities, that Garner still has the lowest per household cost, even after this tax increase. And I think it's also reasonable to note that if the town charged for solid waste separately, as occurs in many of the other municipalities, it would reduce the property tax rate by nearly six cents. Since we've just gone through a spring-fall cleanup, I think it's also worth mentioning that that alone cost approximately $200,000 in the previous budget. Apparently are some issues, items in there that I think are very helpful to our citizens. Hopefully, they are aware of those and will support this budget. Thank you.
Pass.
As I stated at our last two budget meetings, I wouldn't be voting for the budget because I was opposed to what the proposed increase is. So I stated that before. I stated that the impact last year from adding the vehicle tax, $15 on every vehicle, which are now dedicated solely to our roadway and or sidewalk improvements throughout the town, were desperately needed, and the study, consultant study backed that up and collaborated that. So I thought that was a big impact last year. And Mr. Marshburn's right, there's a chart for municipal costs, service costs, Garner is basically the lowest in Wake County, but there's another side of that story, and the side of the story is our average cost of homes is also one of the lowest ones in Wake County, so that balances that out somewhat. So, because we have an older housing stock in many communities. So anyway, I stated before, I wouldn't vote for the budget tonight, so when I say no, it won't be a surprise to anyone.
Okay, the motion is seconded. All in favor of the motion, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Clerk call roll, please.
Mayor pro Tim Marshburn?
Aye.
Councilmember Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
And councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Motion passed, it's 4 to 1. Committee reports, any committee reports?
Before we get there, Mayor, I'd like to address one issue with the, that I added. Item number two, if I may. As you know, Ms. Wertham will be retiring with the town of Garner effective June the 28th, and state statute requires us to have a finance officer at all times. I have completed the process to hire a finance director, but that person will not start until July the 10th. So this is an interim step to make sure we keep that position filled, and I am recommending that we appoint Mike Franks as the interim or acting finance director effective June 29th until July the 9th, just so we'll keep that. He's familiar with some of the processes that the finance director has to go through, and also the financial module and system that we use, so I think that's the logical choice. Most of our financial transactions require two signatures, so it wouldn't make sense for me to do it, because I'm one of the signature, so we need another party to do that. So with your approval, I'd like to appoint Mr. Franks interim finance director.
So move.
What was the question? All in favor of the vote, by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the post.
Mayor, under committee reports, I'd like to let the council know that Mr. Vance and I, who are currently comprising the HR committee, have completed a series of interviews for people who are interested in serving for some of the vacancies on those committees. We anticipate having those names available for submission. I believe Mr. Vance, at the work session, was that your understanding?
Standing.
Yeah, Ms. Gibson, so we'll make our formal report to the council at that time.
Very good. No more committee report, manager report, Roger.
Manager reports, you have your standard reports, the Garner infos in your packet, and then you have a finance report that was just put out in front of you, so you can look over that. If you have questions, feel free to contact us later. And then July the 3rd, logistics, you should have your information for that, which includes parking ticket, and then also some directions of where to be, to be at the stage around 8 o'clock for introductions and those type of things. So pretty standard to what we've always done. Also have, you know, on the second stage, we're gonna have the chairman of the board, and of course, we'll have the North Carolina Symphony on the main stage, and then a host of other activities for everyone, including a play area for kids and some vendors throughout the whole event, so.
Very good. When will the, it probably says in here, when will the music, chairman of the board, does that begin at 7 o'clock, about an hour?
I believe it's 7 o'clock, an hour before. I'd have to check the actual schedule.
Maybe if I look that up.
The gates to the park open at 5:00. I'd have to check the schedule for exactly when they come on.
It's probably on the town website.
Mr. Attorney, you have anything?
Not, nothing except the closed sessions, which we can talk about now or later.
What, you want, later? Yeah, we'll wait, Bill. Anything else, Bill? Nothing else, but the closed sessions. Okay, I'm gonna start with the council, Buck.
I bring, belated, but I'll, anybody has access to Southern Living and keeps any of the past copies, I'd refer staff to particularly Parks and Recreation to the March issue of 19. There's 10 pages on there under the title of House Savers, where people have taken older homes, and this is privately done, but they've gone in, refurbished them, put them to another use. I'll admit to you, I haven't read the details, but they thought it was popular enough, they dedicated 10 pages to this business of house savers. And it, we, there might be some real interesting information in there, since we have one of those houses now that is owned by the town. So I'd just offer that as some, it's good, some good food for thought. I accidentally stumbled into it. Speaking of that house, the Jürgen property, there has been some TLC extended to the shrubbery. Thank you, Forrest. It really looks good there, right by, it's, looks like somebody's thinking about moving Speaking of the Jürgen property, could we, excuse me, that's the town property now, formerly the Jürgen property, at a work session soon, preferably no later than July, could we dedicate an item to the discussion of an RFP for the master planning, since it's not, wasn't included in the current scope of the master planning effort that we're on now? Rather than get into a discussion of that, maybe a work session would work well, and okie dokie.
Our plan is to, is to look in at and revisit what the rules are, and take a close look at that, and we could possibly try to turn that around quicker than July work session, but we're gonna be looking at that pretty soon.
I'm not opposed to.
See what the options are.
An RFP, and matter of fact, I would go ahead and throw out a couple of thoughts, that instead of starting from scratch and having a long period to receive them, receive proposals, take either the three people that made the final list, or the original folks that selected, that submitted proposals, and collapse that timeframe. I don't think anybody could argue with us if we predetermined who we're going to talk to. It's pretty well done all the time.
Yeah, I'll have to see what the rules are for that. We just wanna make sure we're following procurement rules, so we'll check.
Also, could, do we need a meeting of the Public Works Committee, or can we put it on a work session agenda as well, to have some brief discussion about the, making it a formal thing, and having a, and asking for the contract requirements of terms and conditions to be prepared and put a timeline on that? That's something we've been, we've been considering literally for six or eight years, and I think we've got the time between now and the first meeting in December to get that done, and I'd love to see it get done. I think we've got a willing participant in our new town engineer, and that would be helpful if, for the town, I think, if we could get those terms and conditions, so that I don't, me or my successor doesn't continue to make a fool of themselves, asking for things to be taken out. One question, has there been any recent change orders that have been submitted by the contractor at the Rex Center? No hidden agenda, just wondering if, has anything come up as they're trying to finish it out?
There have been a few things. Mr. Kennedy, none that are substantial. We've got a couple of things that we may be bringing back to you in the near future to get your input on, but there's, there are change orders ongoing with the project, just like there are with any construction project.
So there's still some that are still being negotiated?
Yes, sir. And one of those will probably come back to you fairly soon.
Okie dokie. Looking quickly at the finance report tonight, it showed that we had 40 building permit requests for new homes this past month. Forty, I think most of them were at, what's the?
Some out at Auburn.
Some maybe, there's some of them out at 401 and 1010.
The colors?
Yeah. Anyhow, the average, but the only, the average tax base, just for the building part itself, is a little over 100 grand, so, but still, 40 is a significant amount. It's been in the process, and it finally got registered. Last thing, we got a letter on our desk about, a letter from Housing Finance AGC. Are we supposed to do anything with that tonight?
That's just for information, just to let you know. You previously approved that project, but that's just to let you know, Dave, submitted for financing for that.
Does this mean that, does this have anything to do with whether it's tax exempt or not?
It could, but it depends on what, you know, what conditions they fall under, so it's different for everyone.
Can we find out on that?
Okay.
And, because if they're applying for a tax exempt status, that was not our impression when we approved it.
At the time, they didn't mention anything about it.
Mr. Gibson, that letter, Mr. Kennedy, that letter is regarding the funding application, that they will use that and another funding source to help them provide the housing at the rates that they shared with council. It is not anything to do with application for tax exempt status, and it's our understanding from that developer that they do not intend to do that.
The last project we had went through some Wake County financing, so that's why they requested that, so I'm not sure if this one's gonna do the same.
I think this one is going to apply for housing finance funding and Wake County funding, and they notify us when they make those applications.
That's good, I'm glad you knew that, that you saw the, you took care, taking care of that. I was hoping that was the case, but thank you for that information, John. That's all I had.
Ray?
I know it was, thank Public Works for their cleanup, the hedges of the Jürgen property. Thank Forrest and Public Works and guys, looking good out there. Looking, buddy might be there, has not lived in, but it looks good, so just wanna pass that along. Also, on regards to that property, the Ponderidge Apartments, they, I know they got some Wake County funding, because there was an article about it in the news media, about how they got some of the Wake County low, affordable housing monies to help. That's why the rents were so low. And I believe, I know, I didn't vote for that project, but I know that some people have been concerned about it. It's not subsidized low-income housing, it's supposedly affordable housing. It's not subsidized, but it's affordable. The builders subsidize, but the people who live there are not subsidized.
Income-based rents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo Ms. Singleton's comments about the Public Works Department and the good work that they do. It's mowing season now, obviously, and I see them out, particularly in our parks, diligently Several weeks ago, we had a couple whose name I have forgotten, a man and a lady who appeared before us, expressing a desire to have the name of former council member, or deceased council member, Jackie Johns, recognized in some form or way. And at the time, we, I think we indicated to them that we wanted to study that issue. Since that time, obviously, that there is a policy that this council has adopted for that process. I'm not sure if anybody's been back in contact with them, but my impression was that when once the town had taken formal action on that, they would be interested in coming back. So I'd like to suggest, if no contact's been made, that somebody on town staff make contact with either or both of those individuals, and determine if they're still interested in appearing before this council. If for some reason they're not, I'd like for the council to, at some early point in time, go back to that subject and topic, in order to have a tangible way to recognize a memory of Councilmember Johns. Don't see anything else on my note, Mr. Mayor, so that's all for now. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Where are we in the process or timeline for getting the depot moved to its new location? Do we have an update on that?
Yes, I've been meeting with some members of the Historic Society, and right now, what's going on is we're getting a site plan done. Hopefully, it'll be done in the next two, three weeks or so, if not sooner, hopefully sooner. And once we get that site plan, we're gonna bring back the site plan, we're gonna bring back a cost estimate, and a sample MOU to council. We're looking at the July 18th meeting to bring that back. And John, you may have some updates on where the site plan is, but I know Jeff met with the contractor.
Mr. Marshburg met with the contractor that's doing that work, reviewed their work last Thursday, the 13th, I believe it was, and the, he is hoping to be able to wrap that up close to the July 1 submission, that would have to be turned into planning for their, for them to start reviewing it, on the merits of the process it has to go through for approvals. We would like to then take that work, use that site plan to revet our cost estimates that have been put together, to make sure that there was nothing uncovered in the development of the site plan that we didn't have included in the cost estimate, and then bring it back. And we think we could have all that done by the second meeting in July.
Okay, good, very good. And what, do we have an update on the discussion about, with DOT, about fixing the dip at the Don Royal Bar Bridge?
When we met with DOT staff on the 29th of last month, they told us that they had discovered that there was an issue. I may have shared that with you, I think I did in an email, but they had discovered that there was an issue with the compaction of materials under, under part of the support structure where the road ties to the bridge, and they're developing scenarios for how they're gonna address it, because what they have found is not going to be an easy or a quick fix. So they, we don't have a definitive timeline as to when they'll be back with us with anything, but based on the type of response they gave us, I didn't expect to hear anything back really quickly on that, because it sounds like there's some, there's a lot of, a lot to figure out.
So how many years have we been telling them there was an issue, and they have just now agreed that there's an issue? Do we know? I mean, we've been talking about this a long time, and we are, we're making progress if they've admitted it, but it's been frustrating to the public and to us. And the third thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is I would like to recognize a general individual in the audience, Mr. Dean Locklear. Dean is a friend of mine. He is a rising senior at Wake Christian Academy and has an interest in local government. And so I've been encouraging him to come to a council meeting for quite a while, and he's here tonight, so, Dean, if you'd wave. Okay, thank you.
Dean, you picked a good one to come to tonight, because this is a short one.
Anything else, Kathy? Mr. Vance?
On the improvements for US 70 and Montague Street, when do we anticipate that work to begin, with the, with the break in the median for access to Montague Street in preparation for the Rex Center opening up?
We just got an updated schedule today for that work. Looks like it will begin, they're gonna concentrate on Montague and Purvis, and I think US 70 will be last, and so it'll probably be. think US seventy will be last, and so it'll probably be in July, August timeframe.
First, while you're there, so, maybe, Mr. Vance, so when are they supposed to start on Montague and Purvis? That's a good question.
Montague and Purvis, they've already started on Montague, but they've had, they're trying to work out some other issues with regards to the paving operation out there, but that should be starting in late June or early July.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have anything else?
Mr. Johnson, I may have another question for you. In reference to the bridge replacement project on fifty, do we have any idea what's going on with that project, with the bridge replacement process, where we are and?
That one, I don't have an answer for you, because I think that was the one that was managing that project.
Yeah, Mr. Patel was managing that relationship for us, and now that he has departed, we don't have an update from DOT with that, but they are doing the right-of-way acquisition, but I think when we looked last, they were still hoping to put that out later this summer for construction bids, and we'll confirm that schedule and get an update out to you.
Yeah, I see a number of stakes in yards, so just wondering what's going on there.
I know they've been acquiring right-of-way, they've actually demolished one of the houses that they've bought for that project, and have acquired some others.
Ken's got something. I just remembered the other thing I wanted to mention, somebody mentioned the name of Mr. Patel. You can sit down, Mr. Johnson, if you want to. I didn't have a chance to speak to him personally before he got away, but I'd like to say publicly here that it was a delight to work with him. I think he did good work for the town, and wish him well in his new job, I'm sure he'll do well, but wish I could have had a chance to speak to him more. I guess I could call him on the phone and still do that, but did a good job, thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
We'll be interacting with him fairly regularly, as we develop transit and rapid bus plans around here in Garner, so he'll be back.
Okay, we need a motion to go to closed session.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, could I provide just one little more information on the July third? There was a question about when things started, and for the benefit of those that are watching at home, on the town's website, there's a banner across the top, and those banners roll with various different topics. One of them is about the July third celebration. If you click on that, there's a fairly lengthy, detailed page that gives you all the information about parking, about the schedules, shuttle service, and vendor information, and it looks like the park does open at 5:00 PM, as Mr. Dickerson said, Chairman of the Board's at 5:30, Veterans Memorial Tours end at 7:30, the mayor's presentation at 8:00, and the symphony begins at 8:30. And you can find all that on the website, the town's website, on the July third celebration link.
Thank you, John.
One more time, anything else? I need a motion to go to closed session.
Mr. Mayor, for whoever makes the motion, I'll toss out, if someone wants to start the motion, I'll toss out the citations, if you want to.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go to closed session, based on some needs for.
Well, first, there would be NCGS one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A three, to discuss pending litigation matters with the attorney, and the litigation matters to be discussed would be the two matters involving Mr. McGinnis, who spoke here earlier tonight, basically for purposes of public record, I would say, no one has discriminated against him based on what he claimed or anything else, and I'll explain more in detail to the council in closed session about the status of the appeal from the Board of Adjustment arising out of his conducting a home occupation business without obtaining the proper permit, and regarding the town's action for civil penalty arising from that. Second, under NCGS one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A five, regarding possible real estate acquisition, and one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A six, regarding personnel matters.
Okay, with those sites, Mr. Mayor, I move we go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor, vote, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We're in closed session. Thank you.
Council, just come back from closed session, discussed personnel matter, potential litigation, and also potential land acquisition, and no action was taken at that time. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor, I say aye.
Aye.